Welcome to our Tuesday, January 21st, 25 Board of Education meeting. If I could have everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Board Member Terry Malor, followed by a moment of silence for the following. Carol Blakely, she was a retired teacher from Greece Olympia, teacher's aide at Greece Olympia. She had 30 years of service. She retired in 2005. She came back as a sub and then she was a kids' care aide working until 2021. Santina Sandy Shea worked at district office for many years. After retiring, she went to sub status in March of 2010. And Mary Lennon passed away. She retired from the district after more than 20 years of service. So if you could keep the Blakely, Shea, and Lennon families in your thoughts and prayers, that would be much appreciated.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I sort of move the agenda to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Stensel. Seconded by Mr. Butler. Any additions, corrections to the agenda? I would like to add 6.06, a resolution for architect design services. With that, can I have all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended? That passes nine to zero. My student leaders from Phoenix Academy, welcome this evening. Come on up. You can.
Oh. Here are the Phoenix proposal system encouraging leadership opportunities and empowering Phoenix students to use their voices. Students have a lot of ideas, but we had no formal way to record them and follow up following up.
The proposal system was created to help with this.
They are submitted to Student Council and they presented to Ms. Hawkins during a Student Council meeting.
Who will be involved, the cost and the benefits of having the event and the costs of not having the event.
Once approved, Student Council members organize what is needed, the date of the event, and etc.
We have successfully completed four proposals, Spirit Weeks, Fun Days, Gratitude Trees, and Smoothies so far this year, and have had several that are, sorry, and have had several that are in process, vending machines, lockers, and continuing to get better choices Friday Fun Days. We gather all the students and adults to join in on the Friday Fun Day. Every month, we have two Fridays that are skinny days so students can have a break at the end of the week. When students have an idea, they are required to complete a proposal form and submit it to the Student Council for approval. The gratitude tree. Students are trying to create a warm and welcoming, affirming environment at Phoenix. Clem's Tree of Life painting and the inspiration of work. Yeah, okay. Sorry. Okay. Okay. Clem's Tree of Life painting is the inspiration of this work. Removable leaves and other objects, seasonal dependent, will be filled out by student body and staff and placed onto hooks dispersed throughout the tree.
The idea came about as a way to connect our leader and me work. Leader and me emphasizes the importance of gratitude as a key leadership quality, encouraging individuals to actively express appreciation for others and acknowledge the contributions of their team, aligning with the idea that a true leader recognizes and values efforts of those around them, fostering a positive and supportive environment.
Most of the Student Council members are in art club, too. Students will be using this time to construct and paint the gratitude tree installation. Once completed, all the students and staff will have the opportunity to read a gratitude statement and hang it on the tree. The installation will be in the front lobby.
For more information about all things Phoenix.
Yep, we're gonna do a picture. I was gonna bring everybody up for a picture. Dr. Zaffetz, Deputy Fleming, Superintendent Smolien, the board, the staff from Phoenix, come on down. No, Gina, you get the salute. You're the one who gets the salute, so. Moved by Mr. Bonagorio, seconded by Mr. Butler. Any comments, questions, concerns on staffing? Seeing none of us in favor. That passes nine to zero. Moving on to tenure area changes. Can I sort of move that to the table, please? Moved by Ms. Like, seconded by Ms. Malor. Any comments, questions, concerns on this? Seeing none at all in favor. That passes nine to zero. Moving on to 4.01, Compliance Assurance Plan. Superintendent Smolien.
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call up our Executive Director of Pupil Personnel Services, Stacy Brindisi, and our Director of Pupil Personnel Services, Melanie Stevenson.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Melanie and I are grateful for the opportunity to provide the board and community with an update regarding our Compliance Assurance Plan tonight. So as a reminder, we came in the fall to share information about our two district citations. They're listed on this slide. The first one represents a significant discrepancy in the rate of removals for 10 or more days for all students with disabilities, and that's compared to all students. Our indicator 4B citation represents a significant discrepancy within that subgroup of students with disabilities for an overrepresentation in the number of Black students removed for 10 or more days. And both of those are ongoing citations for us. A little bit of new information, as of this evening, we were notified by the State Education Department. It's not another citation, it's just a different level of citation. So there is 4A in our New York State Performance Plan, and there is 4B. And then there's overall 4, indicator 4, where it talks about an overall disproportionate outcome for multiple years. So if a district is cited for a specific subgroup, for a specific outcome, and it's ongoing with no improvement, we sort of move up into the level of monitoring. And a district identified as having significant disproportionality has a couple of mandates that they have to put into place. I'll explain those in a second. Right now, we are at risk because we're in a citation for two years for Black students with disabilities. So we were previously also cited for Hispanic students with disabilities, but not again this year. So if we were to end up on that list again next year for disproportionate outcomes for Hispanic kids, that would be our year one again, and year two, and so on. So the 4B citation for the specific subgroup of Black students with disabilities has been ongoing for multiple years, and we're on year two, which in one more year, we would be considered having significant disproportionality by race and ethnicity. What I can say is that the business office has been really supportive in planning, knowing that we have been on an office citation list for many years, as long as I've been here. So two of the things that happened is an action of the increased monitoring is one, sort of that review of records and more oversight on campuses. But then also, as you'll see in this slide, it talks about our requirement to reserve 15% of IDEA funds to provide early intervening services. So if we get another year, the State Department's gonna tell us that we need to redirect 15%. Luckily, we already do that every year. So we take money out of our IDEA funds and we allocate them to general ed providers, reading specialists, school counselors, and staff that are hopefully really targeting our kids with disabilities and providing some of those supports prior to some of those outcomes. So that's an ongoing citation, but we're prepared if we don't have the outcomes that we're hoping for this year. So the focus of our Compliance Assurance Plan has been a shift in notifications and procedures in addition to outcomes for our kids. So while we're really working to create alternative outcomes, this is our major shift that we talked about in the fall when we were here. And really, what this visual represents is the shift in practice between previous years and the current school year. So previously, in Greece and in any other district, and frankly, in most districts right now that aren't cited, practices that a behavior or an incident occurs, a removal in school, out of school, alternative to suspension occurs, and then following that, students are provided their procedural safeguards with that series of meetings. And what we talked about in the fall, which continues now, is our focus on shifting that practice to providing all of those procedural safeguards and notifications prior to a removal. And this is for students who have already reached 10 or more days of removal. So this isn't for every student, but once a student reaches that disciplinary change of placement, DESIP, which I know is another definition than what you're more used to, once they reach that level, this is enacted and kids are not allowed to be removed without the series of meetings. So this has been our major work thus far this year, and it's been a learning curve for all of us to put the new procedures into play. We do, however, have, I think, really great results that you were provided late last week in your packet. Just go over a couple of key points in some of the graphs that are provided in your presentation. So overall, shows the improvement between last school year and this school year in the first four months of school, September through December, in the total number of incidents resulting in removals. And this data includes in schools, out of schools, and alternatives to suspension. So you'll see, obviously, a marked decrease there. This slide here breaks it down further into our first cohort citation, which is 4A for students with disabilities, and it really is looking at the number of students with disabilities who have been removed, the comparison between last year and this year on each of our secondary campuses. So you'll notice also, every campus has gone down, and you'll see a really significant increase in the totals between last year at this time and this year, 598 incidents resulting in a removal to 180. And I think we put the number up later, but it represents about a 70% decrease in the number of incidents resulting in removals, which is just amazing. This year versus last year, so this is our next citation, is indicator 4B, which is a specific cohort group within the larger cohort of students with disabilities. This is our Black students, and this is our second year in a row faced with that third year where we really want to make improvements. We have shown some improvement between last year and this year in incidents resulting in the removal of a Black student with a disability, and these are specifically Black students with IEPs. So for some of our work, for our Compliance Assurance Plan and some of our procedures, that's applicable to any student with a disability. Some, as far as some of the more, the reporting structures to the state are just students with IEPs. So that's why we broke it out into specifically IEPs, that's what our citation is for. And our final data point, just looking at comparison thus far this year, is the number of students with disabilities with two or more removals. So as part of our work with the Compliance Assurance Plan and the level of monitoring through the State Education Department, we are monitoring ourselves. We are monitoring ahead of time before we're reporting, so we know what we're reporting, we know where our areas for growth are, and we're really able to track in advance. So we're flagging any student so that we can get ahead of those procedures and start to make sure we're prepared to support kids if they're to the point where they're getting to 10 removals, and then we have different procedures that we have to enact. You'll see that the number of students at each secondary campus with two or more removals this time last year versus this year has significantly decreased as well. So that was the number that I had shared with that total number from Slide 8. So overall, the number of incidents resulting in the removal of students with disabilities has decreased by 70% overall. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mel to share a little bit about changing process.
All right, so as you know, we had shared in the fall that we were required to change some of our processes and procedures. One change that is not directly related to the Compliance Assurance Plan and suspensions of students with disabilities is the proposed suspension letter. We're required to send a letter to parents letting them know we're proposing a suspension, excuse me, and that they have the right to an informal conference. And then following that informal conference, a suspension can then be imposed. Additionally, we're able to remove students with disabilities immediately if they constitute a continuing danger, but only if they're not over that 10 days. In those instances where they're over 10 days, we must conduct a series of meetings and notifications like the pattern determination, manifestation, potential CSE, etc. We've also begun to schedule program review CSE meetings following a manifestation where a manifestation was not found, for the express purpose of discussing the special ed services that will be provided to the student during their suspension. Following the CSE, we're providing the parents with a copy of the prior written notice, which is a summary of the recommendations of the CSE and the rationale for those recommendations. We've also implemented a new tracking system for purposes of documenting the special education services that a student is receiving while serving the suspension. As just providing attendance records showing that the student was in attendance at the re-engagement center was not sufficient documentation. We actually have to show that they received the service that was recommended by the CSE. And then lastly, on this slide, Greg and Jess compile weekly documentation for the removals that occur each week, which I then review and then submit to the regional associate at the State Education Department that we've been working on through this plan. We really continue to be so appreciative of the Board of Education's support with regard to the additional staffing that we've added in order to support the implementation of this plan. As we've shared, we've added the two Assistant Directors for Behavioral Response Systems, Jess and Greg, who are in the audience today, so that we're really able to consult with principals regarding the removals of students with disabilities and conduct the pattern determinations, manifestations, and CSEs as quickly as we're able to. Additionally, we've added district behavior interventionists and crisis intervenors for a net add of three total in each group. We're still in the process of hiring for those positions, so schools will hear more about those as they're filled, but we're very excited about the additional supports. District behavior interventionists consult with buildings and teams regarding challenging student behavior. They help with a plan for addressing that behavior and also to build staff capacity with implementing those plans so as to shape the student's behavior. Our crisis intervenors are the folks who not only support students directly, but they also build staff capacity with regard to implementing behavior intervention plans and modeling the use of those TCI strategies for staff. One of the main priorities of our work with the Compliance Assurance Plan, as you know, was not to simply just reduce the number of removals and suspensions for students with disabilities, but it was also to build staff capacity around addressing challenging behavior. We continue to provide regular TCI training for staff, as well as professional learning with regard to restorative practices. We've also added some additional in-person trainings that are listed here, as well as some that are asynchronous, and we also have some digital badges. Some of the digital badges that we have currently accessible for folks are addressing tough behaviors, ABCs of behavior, GCSD behavior intervention plans, data collection for behaviors, functional behavioral assessments, progress monitoring of a behavior intervention plan, and using effective praise. So we're really proud of all the offerings that we have currently for folks, again, to build their capacity with working through those challenging behaviors. So now I'll turn it back over to Stacy for next steps.
All right, and just finishing up, and really kind of our focus has been on our goals for this school year. It's been a learning curve for everybody. There's new procedures. We are figuring out channels of communication across the district, so it's really been something that we've been dedicating a lot of time to. So our goal is to get to compliance. We, of course, want to get to quality, but our goal is to get to at least compliance so that we're able to really focus on kids more and procedures less. And we have all of the tools and forms and procedures and protocols to be able to do that. It's just us figuring out the timing of that in light of incidents, making sure the right people are keyed in, and really moving through this with our attorney, who this is her first time working through these procedures with any school district. So we're really reinventing the wheel relative to the letters, the mandates, the Compliance Assurance Plan. I would bet my next paycheck that if you had a conversation with administrators in another district, they know very little about this because they're probably not implementing the new procedures as required. Unfortunately, we don't have that luxury of flexibility, so we're kind of building the plane in flight, and everyone's been really, really wonderful about moving forward with it. So a couple of things, again, we want compliance for sure, but we really want to figure out what differently we can do when supporting kids. So Saturday school is a solution that we're trying to really figure out if there's a benefit to that, and starting small and then applying broadly. We're hoping the kids take advantage of it, and we're able to get some buy-in to that, and it will be something that kids are hoping to avoid in shift behavior. The intervention toolkit for schools, so this is where I think the most of our work really lies, and we're trying to focus on this every leadership meeting that we have the ability to talk about the plan, at our principal monthly meetings, at all of our special ed team meetings in schools. We're really trying to focus on what are the different alternative interventions for kids, and that's really where our work is. Increased TCIS training, so we have 12 trainers currently, I believe, maybe 13. Some shifts in job duty, so there might be a change next year, but we have the ability to train a lot of staff. So far this year, we've had 171 new participants in TCI, and we have a total of 401 certified staff. So our goal is really to continue to increase that number. We also have connected with hundreds of people through full staff meetings where we offer little TCI vignettes or little scenarios for staff to just get snippets if they're not able to take part in the full three or five-day training. So that's really improved, too, and that's really our primary crisis intervention. Those are our strategies. That's where our toolkit really lies in dealing with kids in crisis. So our goal is to recruit and hire additional behavior support staff in secondary buildings. So Mel and I are consistently bothering Jess and Greg. Someone applies, they're interviewing, they're really trying to fill these vacancies with staff who have experience and are able to hit the ground running helping our buildings. And then the continuation of professional development opportunities. So we're finding some things work better than others with teams. We're trying to figure out how to shift what we've offered based on feedback. We're open to different sort of opportunities across the district, and we're just trying a bunch of different things. That's why you'll see the synchronous, asynchronous, badges. We're just trying different things to see if we can get some traction with the most amount of people, but it's tough to leave classrooms, too, so there's an impact to that, too. But those are our goals and areas of focus moving forward. And that's it for us.
Questions? Ms. Malor.
Do you actually have Saturday school now?
It's gonna be starting first week in February. I think we're go for first week in February. Yep, transportation, everything's worked out.
Oh, great.
Yep.
Voice President Farmer.
Could I follow up, Terry? So kids have option, can you tell us a little bit more about that part, please? And I'm also wondering about evening school, has that been talked about at all? And I'll just be quiet and let you listen.
Yeah, so we're really open to really kind of process through any creative solution. So it's not an option, well, so it's our first time through it. I guess we're gonna have to kind of figure that out, right? We're gonna work with families and kind of talk that through. Our goal would be to institute that as one of our set of consequences that we're able to deliver in lieu of a removal. So we're hopeful that with conversation with parents and having really some conversations specifically about their kids and wanting to keep them in school, that we can kind of share our purpose for creating this alternative to solution. And we're hopeful that parents will want their kids, you know, to not be removed and participate, and hopeful they might not want to come back either. So we have the best laid plans, and we're starting small at Arcadia. We're collecting some data, and then we're hoping to really expand across campuses. We're also really looking at primarily low-level behaviors first. So, right, I report that there's a 70% decrease. That might not be what you're hearing all the time, right? So we're really looking at an overall decrease in behaviors that result in removals, right? So we're looking at some of our lower-level behaviors and really aligning to the code of conduct, more progressive discipline, more creative alternatives, not going to the end for an initial infraction of a behavior. So that's really our initial target, and then if we can get to the point where we're able to really create some systems and some teaching, right? Because skipping takes a different intervention than a kid who is engaging in threatening behavior or is really struggling with mental health. There are some things that we just need a different skill set to support. So I think it's gonna be wait and see to see what we can target as far as alternative consequences. You know, we're really hopeful that something like skipping, where we want kids to be in class, we wouldn't be removing them from class. That seemed like an easy target, as far as just an initial one to look at a different alternative to see if it takes shape. We have been a little bit more flexible with the cell phone policy, too, I think we shared with you, as far as just like notifying parents and involving maybe a different step in between adhering to our policy, but like not going to the most severe consequence.
Thank you.
Mr. Bonagorio. Thank you for the report. Can you clarify for me the difference between removal and suspension? Because it sounds like, well, so in a case where a student is being assigned Saturday school, is that student removed from other classes, or is Saturday school in addition?
So removals for the State Department are in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, alternative to suspension, any time that results in a student being removed from academic instruction. That's what the State Department would consider a removal. For us, we're hoping to have the Saturday detention in lieu of a removal, right? So there's nothing to remove them from on a Saturday. We can institute a suspension or a detention, and it's not removing them from class. They're able to serve whatever alternative or not, and just address that low-level behavior at a delayed time during Saturday school. That's what we're talking about, that initial sort of lower-level behaviors.
But does that mean they're not in their general ed classroom in that case?
Nope, they're in school business as usual throughout the week, and as a consequence, instead of going to in-school, right? If a same kid's skipping multiple times, a principal may have a lunch detention, then an after-school detention. Now it's an in-school, now it's an out-of-school. We're really trying to prevent that, and there wouldn't be the need for any removal. They would continue in their classes throughout the week. Be assigned a consequence, their consequence would be that Saturday school, where we would partner up either a teaching or support based on whatever the issue is.
So it's an add-on?
It's an add-on, yep. Well, it's replacing, too, right? So we're adding it on to our work, to our school week, but we're not instituting a removal during the week and adding it on. Both things wouldn't be happening, so it's not really an add-on. I guess I should clarify that.
It's an add-on to the menu.
Yes, add-on is an alternative to the menu, not for kids, though. It's an alternative to what they previously would have had a removal for, from a class or something during the work day.
It's an add-on to their schedule. It's not, I guess I'm not understanding.
Yeah, no, so really, this is, a student has a behavior infraction in school, right? They're skipping, again, low-level behaviors we're talking about is just our initial sort of target. A kid has been, you know, has been skipping multiple times. We don't want to remove them from school so they miss more classes, right? We want them in class. So we're keeping them in class during the week when they're skipping. We're talking to them about what their consequence may be, sending them back to class, hopefully that's our expectation, and then addressing the skipping behavior on Saturday when there is no school to miss or no other class to be pulled from.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry if I made that more confusing.
I just want to follow up on Mark's question, and then I'll get you, Mary. But it's, the parent has to agree that it's Saturday But it's, the parent has to agree to the Saturday detention. So if I say my kid's not going, what are we doing in that same situation for that kid that's progressively skipped? If I say, yep, I'm not sending my kid to Saturday detention, now what are we doing?
Yeah, we're playing it out really as an initial partnership with family, so we're calling and offering that and hoping that they'll be in agreement. But yeah, we can't force them to send kids on the weekend, and we also understand there are things that are more exciting than, right, being at school. We're hoping that's a deterrent, right? So the kids are able to participate in family activities on the weekend and not be taken away from it. So again, it's really just trying to be creative. We're not sure if it'll take, we're not, but we have the staff available to do it, the buses to get them there, and we're going to try and see. And then what the team is prepared to do is just get a ton of feedback from kids, right? What's working, what isn't working, what would make this a valuable use of your time. So we're hopeful.
Mary.
I'll try to shorten my three-part question. These are astounding results, but I know how numbers can be played with. So do you have a sense of like how the classroom teachers who are involved with this and on the front line, do they feel this is improving the safety and the climate in the rooms and hopefully in the schools?
Yeah, I think you're going to get a mixed reaction depending on the school, the teacher's skill set and abilities and comfort level in managing behaviors, because we have behavior across all of our classrooms, not just special ed in the district. So it's really about that comfort level, and that's the PD we're trying to offer with the additional district behavior interventionist and crisis interveners, to provide that in-the-moment training for people that might not be able to be pulled out for extensive training. What I would say is that we are really, our data demonstrates that we're still removing kids for similar behaviors as we have previous years. So we have a ton of removals for kids with disabilities, a lot of long terms already suspensions, and they're really for those behaviors that you would think that a student would be removed from. That hasn't changed or stopped. We're still suspending kids, long-term or short-term, for unsafe situations and those bigger deals. What we're trying to do is decrease the low-level behavior, so I think that I would say that no, not all teachers are happy about that because kids can be disruptive if I don't know how to immediately address a behavior in the moment, and they're also worried about their content and teaching. So that's why we're trying to partner up that in-the-moment support, knowing that it's their right to be there, but it's also everyone else's right to that education. We want to keep an orderly environment, and we're not going to be perfect with that, but we have a lot of supports that are available to teach people.
That's excellent, thanks. And the last thing was, I found this research just amazing with when they started older kids later. And of course, when you have buses that have different runs, it's counter to, you know, it's the custodial care issue as opposed to educating the kids, but how the behavior just improved astronomically, and so did the academic performance. I mean, could there be any way of having a third run and having a pilot maybe? And as long as you're doing this work, maybe look at that as an alternative so that you'd have your high school kids, then you'd have your elementary, and then after the elementary, you'd pick up and just try to see how that went.
For Saturday school?
No, for the regular school.
I'm sorry, got it.
And maybe, you know, have a core of teachers that say, I'd like to, you know, I'll stay later and I'll, just a thought, you know?
The research does suggest that, I know my home district went to that switch. That's above my pay grade, Mary.
Well, maybe it's a place to, we can advocate for that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Mr. Butler.
Thank you for the presentation, and congratulations on the really strong results. It's very rare that we see numbers with that kind of year-over-year change, and I wonder if you've, and it's interesting when you look at it, there's some spots, everybody's doing better, period, full stop, and there's some spots where things are better than others. Like on Slide eight, which is secondary students with disabilities at Athena went from 107 down to 16, so it's like an 80% decrease in that as compared to some other places where maybe it's half, we've cut it in half or something. So I just wonder if you've got any suspicions about why you've got some of those bright spots in different areas?
I would just be surmising if I said what my suspicions were, because I'm not positive. There's still so many variables that I wouldn't be able to isolate it to one thing, to say what it is. What I do know that has been more effective in some buildings more than others is just the really direct conversations with staff and teams, honest and transparent conversations about what consequences might be instituted, what staff expectations might be for instituting consequences and what may happen. And I'm not saying other buildings aren't having those conversations. Some buildings have more alternatives already in-house than other buildings. So at Athena High, I think Kelly could, you know, comment that there's like a creative sort of structure that they put in place as a pilot to try some things, as a space to be proactive. Whereas Arcadia High School, they have some follow-up on the backend that's really, really creative as far as identifying the skill deficit and offering direct instruction afterwards that's really targeted. Other buildings are, don't have the similar specialized programming, so some of the incidents are more rare and unfamiliar to buildings, and I think that adds to some of the sort of responses, right? They might be slower to come around a little bit to some of the more traditional responses. Overall, everyone is just, I mean, this is, this data is, you know, although we partner and we're collaborators, this data is a direct result of principals just really leaning in and instituting changes when it's tough. So I think it's just about the culture in the building and how long it takes to kind of chip away and roll something out over others, certainly not for lack of trying in any other campuses.
Yeah, yeah, I, like, as I said, the results are impressive everywhere. Just wonder if some of the conversations we've been having about professional learning communities, like where those bright spots are identified, that maybe that's an opportunity for those professional learning communities to dive in and say, okay, what's working? It's working well everywhere, it's working great over here, what can we learn about what's working really well there and apply it in some other spaces?
Well, the nice part about that is because you have all supported our assistant directors of behavior response systems, Jess is only on two campuses, Greg is only on two campuses. So it's really helpful. They work collaboratively, then they report out to our department on their work. So it's really, I think it's been nice to improve consistency, and it's also been good to share ideas, to say, this building has this figured out, where are we with this? Could we try this? And that's oftentimes how we redirect professional learning or how we might get a crisis intervener over. We're trying to kind of problem solve and build capacity so that it's job embedded, so that some of the things more successful in other buildings will take in other ones, too.
Great. Last thing, on Saturday school, give it a shot, right, and see what happens?
Yeah.
I'm glad to hear that you're working with parents on that, because obviously there may be situations where there are students who have childcare responsibilities or jobs or things like that, that Saturday would get in the way of, which could even escalate the behavior problems that you're seeing during the week. So I'm glad you're talking to parents before that just gets imposed.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Mr. Bonagario.
So I'm looking at the numbers on page seven, and so this is general change in number of incidents resulting in the removal of a student, down about 45%. We know that if we pass a law that says you cannot remove a student for whatever reasons, and if we follow the law, which I'm glad you're doing, we should have reductions in the numbers of students removed. I'm wondering, and I appreciate that you're making a distinction between students removed, student behaviors like skipping, where we want them in class, removing them is, it contradicts the purpose. And you said, my words, you're holding the line on other behaviors, violent behaviors, disruptive behaviors, things like that, because we really need to give everyone their access to a good education. So what I see here is a big reduction in the number of students removed. But what can you tell us about the instances where students are removed? Has that number changed? Are we seeing a reduction, and are we tracking the numbers of incidents? And particularly, I'm thinking of those situations that are disruptive or violent, things like that. What are we seeing there?
So yeah, that's that number that I had shared is similar to in previous years. We're still removing kids for those types of infractions. So before I forget, though, I just want to clarify the law piece, because it's not that we can't suspend them, it's just that if we're going to suspend them, we have to have the series of meetings beforehand. So I want to be clear on that, too, and we are suspending them. We are suspending students with disabilities for less than 10 days, for more than 10 days, dependent on the behavior demonstrated, and cabinet makes that decision based on all of the procedures we'd always have in place previously. The difference is about the timing of the removal, which is significant. It's not not significant. We are just getting to that stage. If we're looking at reporting on going to the state with the number of kids that are at DCEP, right, 10 or more days, it's mostly our long-term kids, one or two of our cumulative kids. So we're not at that point yet where we have a ton of kids at that level, but that's why we're tracking that every week, knowing that it's any kid that has two or more removals. This here, on Slide seven, is the number of incidents resulting in removals, not the number of kids who were removed, and that's for all students. So I think what we're seeing, too, is just a shift overall. If something works well for a student with a disability as far as a creative solution or peer mediation or teaching, right? Those are the things we're hoping to try with general ed kids, too, and I think that's a little bit of what you're seeing in that overall number, too.
And I think it's also reflective of some of the capacity building that we've done. Like, for example, when we've done the TCI light trainings with secondary staff, it really helps them take a look at the conflict cycle and how to not engage in that with a student. So we have staff that have shared that, you know, phrases like drop the rope, where they've stopped themselves from engaging in that conflict cycle and then sending the kid out of class and hoping for a removal. They've had more strategies and tools in their toolbox to really engage with that student and get them de-escalated, back into class participating, et cetera.
Voice President Farmer.
Do you know if charter schools have to follow this as well?
So the procedures regarding the meeting structures is just the new way of doing business. That's the interpretation the State Ed Department has of the regulation, so that is applicable to every student in any school in New York State if they're suspended 10 or more days, those series of meetings.
As well as private?
Private schools, no. Private religious, those wouldn't fit into that. But our private schools that we pay tuition for, charter schools, anybody that receives public funds, they would be under the regulation in that way.
There's a follow-up to that before I go to Mr. Bonagario. The charter schools, though, can send you back to your home district. If you're a discipline problem, they have the ability, so they don't have to follow it, because if you're a problem, they can say, thank you very much, go back to Grease Central and do that.
They have to follow the meetings. They can still remove a student. That's what makes a difference.
Yeah, and send them to Grease.
In the end, after the meetings, they can remove a student. We're a public school district, we can't do that. So that's the big difference there.
But at eight days, they could ship you back. If you're a problem, they can ship you back. I mean, we all know they're doing that.
Oh, figure it out.
Yeah, they're not dealing with the long-term issues and discipline problems.
Sorry, Mr. Bonagario?
Thank you. In the past, well, I think it was in the past two weeks, there was an article in the NICE at News regarding the teachers' unions advocacy for better workplace violence prevention, citing the Workplace Violence Prevention Act. And a teacher recently also directed my attention to an article from the United Federation of Teachers regarding the SAVE Act, Save Schools Against Violence in Education. And both articles pointed out, we have IDEA on one side that's protecting the interests of students with disabilities, and then on the other side, there are these laws that require us to pay attention to the safety of our staff. And in the case of SAVE, there are opportunities for staff members to invoke rules that require removals or might require removals. So there's a balancing act, not only a balancing act, but we have to, we still have to abide by the rules, right? It doesn't mean that you get to choose one or the other. Somehow we have to make both of those work. I generally only hear this one side of it, but what are we doing on that other side? Are we, is our staff aware of their rights, and how are we safeguarding our staff and our other students as well in the process?
Yeah, so I would just say at a baseline level, we've distributed an FAQ document that really talks about SAVE relative to our citation. So while teachers and staff do have the right to invoke SAVE, they do not have the right to do it beyond 10 days, so just like a principal. So if you have a student who's been suspended for eight days, nine days, and a student is presenting an issue in Kelly's classroom and she decides to invoke SAVE and it's the 10th day, she cannot do that, and we've communicated that to GTI. So it's not just a carte blanche removal of a student from a classroom, the same procedural safeguards, which is the point of the State Ed Department. We should not be removing kids for multiple days for disability-related needs. If it's not, then it's a removal, just like they're a gen ed kid, but that's those questions we have to answer. So we can do it, but it's really about the procedures.
Mr. Stetzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the report. This is very enlightening, and I can really appreciate and see the hard work that you guys are putting into this, so thank you for that. I was curious, on page 15, you were talking about the professional development, sorry, slide 15. I wondered if you could kind of unpack some of it a little bit further. So like the Unlock the Code, Understanding the Why Behind Student Behaviors, is this like a class that you developed as Grease to teach teachers about, or, like, I guess where did that curriculum come from? And then I'm also really curious about the book study with Beyond Behavior. Why this particular psychologist? Like, what informed that decision, that book? Where's the data behind it, I guess?
Yeah, so Mel and I have charged Greg and Jess with working up a menu of professional development. We had a lot of standard offerings, so we're trying to get creative, like I said, trying new things. So I'll let them talk a little bit about the book study and how the books were selected, if you don't mind, if they'd be able to better answer that.
All right, so to answer your first question, the Unlocking the Code Professional Development was something that was developed by Greg and myself based on some research around function-based thinking, which essentially is identifying the function of a student's behavior so that it can be prevented ahead of time. And we initially rolled this professional development out to the leadership group a couple of months ago, and it was really successful. So some of the feedback that we received from principals was that they wanted their buildings to get this. So we are making that available to all staff. We have a pretty good group signed up. It's going to be held next week, actually. And then the book study is something that's actually run by some of our behavior interventionists as well as our special education TOSSAs, and I have not read the book, so I don't have a lot of information on it. What I can say is the reason they chose the book was many of them have, most recently, gone through the behavior analysis program at the University of Rochester, and this was a text that they felt was very relevant to what we're doing, that they, was a major part of their degree. So they wanted to sort of pare that down for our staff and make it applicable to what we're doing in classrooms. So that's how they chose that.
And they're also the people that are consulting and intervening with those crisis situations and also with students that are demonstrating some really challenging behavior. They're the ones that are in the building, working with teams, modeling, you know, giving recommendations, seeing how it goes, coming back in, looking at the data, figuring out is the plan working, is it not working, and then making adjustments and recommendations there.
Thank you.
Mr. Bonagario.
So I realize you're reporting on the compliance assurance plan, and maybe this question goes beyond your scope, but I'm wondering if we can receive the data? But I'm wondering if we can receive the data that reports on that, those incidents that go beyond those things like skipping, et cetera? The things that really disrupt school for our kids and put teachers, staff, and students at risk? And I know the data on Page 7, at least from how I'm understanding it, that goes beyond students with disabilities. So maybe it's more of a generic, general question? But I'm wondering if we can get that data from an oversight perspective?
In your next board packet, you're going to get a detailed attendance and behavior report with, I think, what you're looking for, some details around what types of behaviors are leading to the actual removals. So there'll be a lot more detail coming in that. And also on attendance and some of the interventions that we're doing, too. More detail there.
Okay, I'll look forward to that. Thank you.
I just got one. Actually, I got a couple of questions. So, I mean, I appreciate the fact that we're extending the clock on the 10 days. We're more nickel and diming instead of taking bigger bites on the 10 days. How many students district-wide are knocking on that 10-day window right now?
Less than 10.
Nine.
Nine.
Nine. And so once they get, just so I'm clear, once I get to my 10 days, what happens?
So you get to your 10 days and business as usual until a behavior happens that might result in a removal. And prior to you being removed from school, we have to deploy, Jess and/or Greg, get notice to families, and convene meetings. That is the ask from State Ed.
So basically, so I'm clear, no matter the offense, once I've hit the 10 days, I can't be removed until I, we have a meeting? And if my parents can't happen to make a meeting till next week, I'm in school?
Yeah, so those are case-by-case basis. If a parent is a no-show and there's some other delay tactics, those are different conversations than involving parent voice, which is what we've been charged to do, is having parents be at the table when we're making these decisions for kids. So hopefully, we'll be addressing that. But yeah, essentially, and that's up to and until we make a determination it's not a manifestation. Because if after 10 days, we make that determination, this also was disability-related, then they do need to go back. And we have to decide, what do we need to do differently to support this student in school? So that could be a variety of things. That could be them going back into the classroom and receiving additional adult support. That might be, it might be a recommendation for an alternative placement. There are alternatives that we have through Phoenix and different supportive sites. So it really depends on the kid's scenario and the number of disciplinary infractions, their behavior plan. It's so many variables that...
But I think from an advocacy standpoint, from a Board of Education perspective, and I'm going to give you a scenario. I'm at my 10 days. I've done a host of things through the three months. I decide I'm going to beat Jeremy up. Jeremy's getting, Jeremy hit me back, he's getting five days. I've hit my 10 days. My parents can't come in tomorrow, they can't come in till, what's today? Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? They can't come in till Thursday. So I'm in school till Thursday?
Those are some of the scenarios that we're forced to play out.
So from an advocacy standpoint, that's something the Board should be advocating on, that there's certain, I mean, I get, if I have my 10 days and I skip Kelly's class, I get that, that I shouldn't be. But if I'm violent, or I bring a weapon to school, or something along those lines, I mean, obviously, the weapon's going to be an LTS situation anyway. But if my behavior is bad once I've hit the 10 days, I'm in school while the person that we fought, he could be out for five, but I'm in school the next day. I mean, that, from an advocacy something, I think that's, and I'm not criticizing you guys at all.
No, we got it.
You know, I mean, I think from an advocacy standpoint, from a Board of Education, that's something that, with this cap, needs to be tweaked a little bit. Because, I mean, I do think, based on the nature of certain events, that there should be a, now, this rises to this level, you should be out of school, even though you've hit your 10 days already.
And the State Ed Department wouldn't say it as probably I'm saying it, where we can no longer remove for disability-related needs. They would say something along the lines of, if it is a pattern of behavior, then we have to figure out how to address it in a different way.
Well, I mean, the commissioner doesn't want to suspend anybody. I mean, the commissioner, I've heard that right from the commissioner's mouth, that nobody should be getting suspended from school, which, I mean, I think you've been a long time since you've been in a classroom, not to fire a shot at the commissioner, but I think you have 3% of your population that lead to most of your problems in any school district. So, I mean, I think that's unrealistic.
There are some provisions for significant incidents, drugs, weapons, serious bodily injury. But it's really tough to meet that threshold, and it still would require Jeremy. He may institute something quicker, but we'd still have to have those meetings. So there's some provisions, if it fits into a specific category, but not a relief from the meetings, just a little bit of a relief in the timing of them.
And then, just for clarification as well, sorry, is, so once I've hit my 10 days, even to LTS me, like, a long-term, we would have to have a meeting and go through the whole process? And we would have to offer, as a district, alternatives to a long-term suspension, clearly?
Yes. And what they're really saying, too, is, so also, what the State Ed Department wouldn't say is, kids have to stay. What they would say is, you have to have a meeting before kids could be removed, right? And that's really what our citation is, is we have kids who have been removed and we haven't had a CSE to say what their services are going to look like. So with that...
So as long as we check that box, we're good. I mean, in theory, is that what you're telling me? So if I check the box, we have the meeting, we're good?
It has to be before the kid's removed.
Yeah. So if we have a meeting tomorrow, I punched Jeremy today, my parents come in tomorrow morning, I'm in school tomorrow morning, we check the box, we have the meeting, I can be out for five days starting tomorrow.
Yes, if it's not a manifestation of your disability, then you would be suspended like a general education kid. We wouldn't even really need to have a CSE. We would just talk, how are services going to be delivered during your suspension? And we would move on. The kid might come back. And then it's, again, the same scenario, another incident. We're still, and that's why we've...
So the biggest issue is checking the box. That's the biggest...
The timing of it. So it's the series of meetings and the timing of it. So that is what the State Ed Department is pushing us to say, is you can't send a kid home until you've had all these conversations. And what we're saying is, the impact in a culture and, you know, just people feeling comfortable in classes when there are bigger issues is the impact and why it's taken so long, which is why it can't be advocated for some time, additional time.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate you guys, you know, answering my questions. Jeremy?
Yeah. I think it's important to note, you've said it, but to say again, that the cap does not at any, there's no part of the cap that states that students with disabilities can't be suspended. What it's doing is just ensuring what they call their procedural safeguards. That after 10 days, what the state is saying, and this is what we've shared, you know, with our administrators and with teachers, is that when you look at the sole purpose of the cap, it's procedural safeguards with students with disabilities to just ensure that we're not removing a student due to their disability. At the heart of this, at the heart of the citation is really to ensure that a student that has a disability is not removed due to their disability. That's what those meetings are for. And so, the, the, kids can be suspended, but it's just ensuring their procedural safeguards take place before you make that determination for them to be removed. To your point, it's the timing.
Yeah.
Is that we're bound to have those meetings before you can make that determination. But sometimes that translation gets lost as it gets out into our buildings, that the messages, our students with disabilities can't be suspended after, they can't. We just got to put procedural safeguards in place with that.
I guess, just one more question. So we weren't doing any of these meetings before? Like, when we were suspended, our kids were special?
We were, but we were doing it in this order. So what every other district does now, and, right? This is what, and it was permissible before. The new interpretation came last year. Mel and I have been doing this for over 20 years. This, the regs have said the same thing for many years, and they haven't changed, which is our push, but it's the interpretation. And the clause that they're interpreting says that only the CSE can essentially determine what services look like during, if there's a manifestation. So you have to have that meeting first.
And what would happen in some cases, previously, for like a short-term suspension? The student would be removed, they would serve the three days, then we would hold a manifestation. We'd say it's part of their disability, so then they serve three days that they shouldn't have served.
And that's what they're trying to do, is not have any removals without those questions answered.
So basically, and I think you guys hit on this a little bit, like, some districts aren't even looking at this because they haven't been cited. So they're still doing it this way. So when we hear from neighbors, friends, whatever, that, well, my school district still does it this way, the rationale is because we've been cited with our students with special needs. Perfect.
My colleagues that have been cited are the only ones that are enacting these procedures this quickly. Is everybody working on it? Have we been told to shift practice? Yes. But not given the timeline that we've all been given. They're definitely not moving.
Great. Thank you.
Just one other thing regarding what you said, Jeremy. However, they can't be if it's a, if it's a part of their disability.
If it's a manifestation, 100%, yeah.
So it doesn't matter about the meeting.
But that's all, I guess, that has always been the, like, that part has not changed. That if you, once you've reached that threshold, which was, no matter when you have it, but once you, once you've determined that that behavior is connected to their disability, 10 years, you know, when I was in the building, that would always be the case. Yeah.
I just think that that's such a problem for the code of conduct and for the climate in the school. You know, it's hard for kids, it's hard for anyone to understand how they do the same thing. Or, in this case, Sean's the one that beat you up.
But it wouldn't happen, though.
I don't know. Could go either way.
I think then the question becomes, when we determine that it is connected to their disability, the question becomes, what needs to be different for the student? And that's where, we say, do they need adult support? Have we done an FBA and a behavior plan? Do they need a different program? Do they need an additional related service? Those are the questions that we ask, and we need, we figure out what needs to be different for the student so that there, we shape the behavior, they don't repeat that behavior.
Thank you. And to act in a timely fashion.
Correct. Yeah. Well, and so, just to kind of comment on that, we, Mel listed, and I share, too, some of the outcomes, and many times, we're continuing to refer kids out. We have more kids awaiting placement than ever, than, right? We have 27 students right now. Some are in their programs waiting, and some are actually in tutoring waiting. But we are referring kids out. It's just that we don't have a lot of places for them to go. So there's different perceptions on that, too, I think, depending on where the kid stays after a recommendation.
Ms. Frer.
Yeah, thank you, guys, for doing this. You may have answered this question, but when you have a student, the teacher in the classroom because of this, so we're saying the student may go back to the classroom while we're waiting for this, or while they're in a holding period? How is the teachers handling this?
So that's what we're talking about, is what we're really trying to get, that job embedded professional development. There are very few kids this has happened to. I do not believe this has happened in any scenario yet where there's been a significant safety issue where kids returned right away. We're trying to create alternatives to support kids, and we're trying to utilize common sense, right, to support kids who are in crisis. We're trying to engage families to come in and have conversations, and we're trying to convene our required meetings. So we're really hoping that the partnership continues to sort of support all of this work together because it's a learning curve for all of us. And there will be circumstances, based on this, where we'll have more kids who are getting into that DCEP 10 or more day range, who this will apply to. The rubber is going to meet the road soon. So I do anticipate things, you know, bubbling up a little bit more, and we're prepared to support. We unfortunately can't change the regulation or the State Ed interpretation of it.
Superintendent Smollett?
Oops, sorry. I'll come back to you. Or go ahead.
It's okay. I just had a follow-up to Sean's question. The nine children, students that you were having a problem with, those are students that have more than one infraction? They are repetitive? Is that where we're going with that one?
Yeah, so if you look at Slide 10, those are all of the students in secondary schools who have two or more removals. We have students who are bordering that timeframe. So they're adding on to infractions. One was an LTS, yes. So we do have a kid beyond 10 days for an LTS.
Good. Superintendent Smollett?
I just wanted, and by first, just recognizing the incredible work that your department has put into this, starting over the summer. It's significant work. It's work, you know, you're not in buildings, you're working with building principals to focus on this, and that takes a lot of work. So I want to recognize your department for the work that you're doing. And I also want to recognize the building principals and assistant principals that are learning this, taking this work on, along with running the buildings. This, you know, what you're seeing in this data doesn't come easy. It's been a lot of hard work. There's work to continue to do. But you can see us moving in the right direction. But there still is work that needs to get done, and I wanted to publicly recognize you for that.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
Mr. Bonagario?
I just need a little bit more clarification on the rule. So in this instance, you shared with us two citations, both of which involve students with disabilities. And that, I think, is the key thing in these citations. So if these scenarios here, the situations that these, that this data refers to did not involve students with disabilities, would there still have been a citation? Or was it exclusively because this process was turned around? We didn't reorder it? And I guess a question is, we, you started that new process at the beginning of the year, so...
Yeah, so the citation is not based on our procedures. The citation is based on disproportionate outcomes. It's based on those consequences. And then the Compliance Assurance Plan has us enact policies and procedures that are systemic, that deal with that over-representation of black students suspended.
Or disabled, or students with disabilities suspended.
So any state performance plan indicator is through IDEA, and that's completely students with disabilities. We were just showing the frame of reference of all students, and that we've made marked improvement across the board, including gen ed students, and that was Slide 7's representation. But the citation is all for special education students. Our, that's going to get even more confusing. Our procedures, as far as holding those meetings in advance, are for any student with a disability, so that's 504 and IEP. The students we report to the State Ed Department, compliant records are just IEPs, and that's the state performance plan. So these procedures, once the citation goes away, aren't going to go away. They're the new norm, the new regulations. Those are different than the actual Compliance Assurance Plan.
So even if we do the manifestation determination report and we identify that the behavior was not a manifestation of disability, would disproportionality prevent us from taking disciplinary actions or removing a violent student?
Yeah, that is a question that we're charged with answering, right? So there's some certain circumstances for really egregious behavior, drugs, weapons, bodily injury, serious bodily injury. Those are outside of sort of the realm, and there's some different provisions, but we also would have to have those meetings. The difference is, anytime there's a manifestation, that student cannot have that consequence instituted. That is the difference. So if you're just looking at gen ed kids, right, we don't ask those same questions. They don't have that same procedural safeguard. So yes, it's strictly for students with disabilities. And it really is about other students with disabilities in the state. So it's not, there's a relative risk ratio, but they look at two standard deviations above the mean of the suspension rate across the state. And that's significant for us, for our black students with disabilities, over a five, where the statewide average is around a two. So more than two times the rate of suspensions for those students.
And just a last clarifying question. Can, can those numbers be driven higher by students who, by a single student who has multiple suspensions?
So it depends on the data report. We report the number of students who are at 10 or more days. So yes, if a student, if a multitude of students have 10 or more days, we're reporting all of those to the state. Just because you have a disability, if you've been suspended five, six days over the course of a school year, these provisions aren't in place, and we're not reporting on you. You have to get to the DCEP, whereas the rubber meeting the road with these circumstances.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Moving on to 4.02, Budget Development Process Updates. Superintendent Smollett?
I'm going to ask Romeo Cololi to present.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to have our Executive Director of Finance join me as well on this for tonight. We're going to do a quick budget update, where we are in the current process. We're going to take a look at some of the state of the state. We're going to take a look at some of the state of the state highlights, talk a little bit about some advocacy priorities that are out there, and then round it out with just a budget timeline so that we know where we're going to go. One of the things I wanted to bring up again, as we do each year, is the strategic plan. This is our anchor for decisions we're making at Cabinet and recommendations that we bring to the Board. All our budget decisions will be based on the strategic plan or the Reach 2027 framework, which is based on our three commitments of igniting learning, cultivating trust, and expanding opportunity for all our students throughout the district.
So I want to speak to process. I wanted to take us back to 2425 budget development, because we looked at that process in terms of coming off of ARP funding, coming off of big increases that, the result of increases in foundation aid, and we developed a process that would allow us to have sustainability in the budget. So we did some things. We right-sized a number of budget lines, and we really saw this as establishing a new base. For this year, the process started by looking at the strategic initiatives that are part of the strategic plan, and then we met with Superintendent Smoline and Deputy Super Fleming to get a sense of ongoing and new initiatives that are going to drive the budget, including such things as leadership development and mentoring, among others. And then we took that and moved to the next level. We looked at Cabinet and started to look at department initiatives that they're seeing for consideration, things like curriculum development initiatives, technology infrastructure, replacement of systems at or near end of life, community school initiatives, summer programming, et cetera. And then from that, we took those initiatives that are, the new initiatives that are generally centrally budgeted and funded, to look at what that would mean to the buildings as we go forward. The next step was to complete those department meetings for budget planning. We focused on closing the loop so that buildings would be aware of any changes that are coming through, that they may not be budgeting for the initial phase, but would be part of their requirements for years two or three out. We looked at, again, we right-sized a number of budgets, but we knew well that the right sizing that we did was probably wrong, but we did our best shot, and in this year's budget, we really looked to hone that down and make corrections where necessary. We reviewed adjustments to curriculum, equipment, BOSI's expenditures, to assure the proper alignment. The next part of our budget development process, we take all positions in the district, and they're rolled over into the 26 budget. We increment them based on contractual agreements. We complete analysis of our major expenditures, benefits being one of them, and we did that by looking at a census of all employees based on open enrollment in December, and we used the new rates that are going into effect, or that have gone into effect, and then projected forward increases to get a detailed look at what those benefit expenditures would be from a district perspective. Excuse me. For operational departments, in conjunction with HR, we looked at staffing requirements. Those requests are not part of the initial rollover. Those are things that we will look at as adds as we go through the process. Again, looking at the budget development process, we start to look then at the revenue side. Governor Hochul gave her State of the State address last week, and today she presented her budget initiatives. We actually got state aid runs. We're in the process of looking at those to review and scrutinize that, to make sure that those are numbers that are consistent with what we believe to be accurate, especially are on the expense-driven aids. The legislative budget will be developed in conju, or the enacted budget will be developed as a compromise between the governor and the legislative budget, and that comes at the end of March. Historically, it is more favorable than the governor's proposal, and it's also being framed with, through the lens of the Rockefeller Institute review of the Foundation Aid Study. So a number of proposals were identified in the Rockefeller study that may, some have been incorporated into this budget that was shared today. There may be others that in long term may factor in and could significantly change the funding formula. So again, recapping last year, the governor, to put in perspective, changed the way in which CPI was calculated. It would have been 4.1%. She manipulated, and I choose that word properly, manipulated the formula so that the CPI was 2.4% and eliminated the hold harmless provision that had been in place since 1976, which impacted 50% of districts. Again, putting in perspective, the way in which the enacted budget is favorable, the CPI was restored to 2.8%, and the hold harmless changes were rejected. So looking at the, some of the metrics, the tax cap will be presented at the February 25th Board of Education meeting. The tax-based growth factor in the tax cap is 1.0021%. The allowable growth factor is at, in excess of the, or is 2% based on the CPI being in excess of 2. The CPI data scheduled for release in January, released today, is 3.1, and we'll be reviewing our debt service budget with our fiscal advisors on February 6th.
Okay, as Janine had mentioned, last week, the governor provided her State of the State. We just wanted to touch on some highlights that may be applicable to the district. One area that she spoke about was restricted cellphone use in K-12 education. She mentioned that again this morning. She's looking to create, or I should say this afternoon, she's looking to create a new statewide policy or standard for distraction-free instruction within the classrooms. So we should be seeing some further recommendations coming out from that. Another item she spoke about was expanding youth mental health services to provide funding to support high school students to strengthen their mental health wellness skills, and initiatives to equip the next generation with critical media literacy skills. The funding in this initiative is to provide students with tools to identify, understand, and respond to signs of mental health and substance abuse challenges, including bullying and school violence, a couple of the things that we're speaking of this evening, and to connect mental health resources to after-school programs. So hopefully, we'll see more on that as we go. She also has an initiative regarding the early college high school program to streamline the funding. There are currently three streams of funding. Her initiative would combine those three programs and focus on economically disadvantaged students for college credits, and to provide those credits free to families. Another initiative is to engage students in positive activities like youth sports, art programs, community building. Again, she's looking to increase funding for these initiatives. There's an initiative called New York Plays Initiative, stands for, with some parentheses, places for learning, activity in youth, socialization, again, competitive, competitive grants to fund playground development and maintenance across the state. A big item that was spoken about, and we heard again today, was universal, free, universal school meals across the state for all 2.7 million students. The addition was about $120 million to close that gap from this year to next year, to provide free meals across the state. And a couple of times in her address, she did mention that it would save roughly about $160 a month for families, or about $1,600 a year in breakfast and lunch costs. So again, that was one of her strong initiatives as well. And again, she's also looking to assist businesses by promoting some collaboration between the Department of Labor, school districts, and businesses to recruit high school students for summer work in high-demand fields, and also to provide funding to registered apprenticeships in high-demand occupation to help cover wages, training, and wraparound services. And then the last item, kind of related more to us, is our tax cuts and rebates, and she spoke about those again this afternoon. She'd like to, has an initiative to reduce middle-class taxes and provide about, up to $3 billion in inflationary rebate checks to all New Yorkers. The rebate checks would be about $1,000 for every child you have under four years old. As a rebate back to the families. We're not yet certain how this tax cut and rebate program may have on the level of school aid. At the time we wrote this last week, the current SED estimates were about $1.7 billion increase in education aid. Back in the mid-year, New York State reported it was about $1.0 billion. However, as an epilogue, and Janine mentioned, that the school aid runs came out, our foundation aid looks like it's up over last year. We're still taking a look at that, and we'll see what the legislative budget comes out with in mid-March. Next, we'll talk about some advocacy priorities.
So there are numerous groups that have agendas for advocacy. We did focus on the business administrators and the number of items that came in, that were incorporated into the Rockefeller report. One of the major items was to allow expense-based aids to run at current law levels and not to manage those or manipulate them. Second was to implement changes to the foundation aid formula that are consistent with increasing needs of students and the increasing cost to address them. So a couple of the things that did get incorporated, or recommended, rather, was to use current census, and that was in fact incorporated into the governor's proposal. Another was to modify formula for data elements that are no longer accurate. That, too, was incorporated by reduce, by not using the free and reduced lunch and using another measure in its place. Recognizing student need changes. One of the recommendations was to adjust the ELL adjustments based on proficiency, and to look at funding special ed in an entirely separate form. There are other initiatives that were incorporated, was to use multi-year averages to decrease volatility in the formula, rather than having a one-off year totally skew the aid that comes through, to eliminate set-asides. For instance, we have a community school set-aside that identifies X number of dollars that need to be allocated for community schools, and in our district, we certainly use those and then some, but set-asides are limit, will limit a district's ability to have the flexibility to put funds where they need them. And then use, another recommendation was to use the CPI for the Northeast region rather than the national CPI. We are, I think I did mention, we are using the current census. That was part of the governor's proposal compared to the 20-year-old census data. We're using the small-area income poverty estimate to determine student needs, and we're using the New York State economically disadvantaged count to replace free and reduced lunches. So that does take some of that pressure off with not receiving data on free and reduced lunch, but it doesn't eliminate the benefits that families would receive when they do, in fact, file for that. Another recommendation was to restore growth aid in the current year. Districts that experience large increases in enrollment would not have any of that factored into the aid they receive until the next budget year, which in many districts could be a hardship. There's been advocacy for years to increase the staffing rate from $30,000 to $60,000 for BOSI's adable salaries. That would make it far more available for CTE programming, and then to look at kindergarten or pre-kindergarten transportation and pre-kindergarten specific capital projects to be adable and to merge all the pre-kindergarten funding into a simple needs-based formula based on student allocations.
Couple further advocacy points. Districts are currently filling critical positions with retirees. There is advocacy for the governor to extend the authorization to utilize retirees for an additional five years without any penalty to the district or to the employee. Two, charter schools. As everybody knows, tuition payments for charter schools can be a large portion, in our district, they are a large portion of our budget, and this enrollment shift, beginning of the year, during the year, between charter schools and the public district is unpredictable. So there's some advocacy around eliminating SUNY authorization of charter schools and only allow SED to be the authorizing agency for any new charter schools. Establish a new funding stream to reimburse districts for charter school tuitions. Again, it's been out there for a couple of years, or a number of years, but we haven't seen it. And the whole charter schools, to the same accountability and transparency requirements as are held to the public districts. We'll see where that one goes. In terms of electric bus, since the initiative has come out, districts have not identified, a number of districts have identified challenges that were not considered as part of the initial The law applies the same across all districts, and as we know, it's not the same for all districts in terms of trying to implement any type of an electric bus initiative. And one of the things I read that was kind of interesting is unlike electric cars, where the prices are coming down, electric buses are not, they're going up, which is a little contrary to the initial law as well. And then there's a bunch of uncertainty around the federal support for the program as we go forward. So there's advocacy that you see on the screen here, is to establish a statewide policy to address what happens when your voters fail to approve a bond for your electric bus initiative, whether that be for buses or for the capital work that needs to be done. Update the building aid allowances required for the infrastructure needs, include garages and parking lots and other infrastructure items that are in there. Ensure state oversight of infrastructure needs outside the district's control. This is referring to municipal infrastructures and things like the grid. We don't have control over it, but we have to be bound by it. We have to do whatever someone else tells us to do, and we don't have any local control over that. And allow districts to move to either a hybrid, low-emission, rather than a full zero-emission bus, where zero-emission project, products are not entirely viable, or you don't have enough adequate power, or the distances of your routes just don't work out well with electric buses. So more to come on that. And then lastly, to incorporate the following revision to the property tax cap, make the allowable growth factor 2% or to change in the CPIU, which is just another standard instead of the regular CPI. The U is the Urban Consumers Price Index instead of the General Consumer Price Index. And then address some regulations regarding taxable status and calculation of the tax-based growth factor. The big one here that comes to mind for me would be the pilots. As we know, Greece has a lot of pilots, independent and living, senior living centers that are in Greece. They're growing all over the place. However, they're excluded from the growth factor. Our growth factor stays lower than it should have. The advocacy is to include that brick-and-mortar building in the growth factor to provide some additional room for school districts. And then finally, just looking at the timeline, we're January, we have the meeting for this evening. Going into February, we've already mentioned there are two meetings. We'll do the budget rollover and the state ed analysis that came out today at the next board meeting. We'll look at debt service and the tax cap calculation and the bus replacement proposal for February 25th. March 4th, we'll look to have the resolution for the bus replacement proposal to be approved, followed by the second meeting in March, which would be just a budget update. In April, we're looking to present the superintendent's recommended budget on April 1st. Public hearing will be on the same day. Legal notices will be published throughout the month. Adoption of the budget, proposed budget, and the property tax report. Adoption of the budget, proposed budget and the property tax report card this year will be two weeks later. The last couple of years, we've had to do it back-to-back weeks. This year, because of timing, we'll have two weeks in between the superintendent's recommended budget and the formal adoption by the board. Ballots will be mailed on 4/24, and the budget book will be available to the public by April In May, we'll do our official public hearing on May 6th. Budget notices will be mailed to all residents on May 7th, and then the final budget vote in Board of Elections will take place on May 20th. Questions? Mr. Maloney?
Since in the past, we have invested some money in some honor pouches, does that mean that the way the govern, the governor has put it, that there will just be those old phones allowed in school? Or will the honor pouches still exist?
Oh, the honor pouches. I am not certain. I haven't read anything more on how that's going to be implemented. Have you seen anything?
I haven't, I haven't seen anything, but she did say from the start of the day to the end of the day, so they need to be off. Whether there is going to be direction as to how that is managed at the district level, that's not clear yet, but she did say that there will be funding associated with it.
Okay. 13 million, right? Is that what I read today, 13 million?
Karen Miller told her. But she did indicate that it would be up to the districts to figure it out, but there was no requirement or guidelines provided at this point, other than they, they need to be disconnected from the time you come into school to the time you leave. Mr. Bonagario?
I may have missed it, but were there any mandates in that list that were, that were funded by the state? I think there was a grant that was included in one, but...
There were a couple of competitive grants mentioned and some additional funding behind some of the initiatives, but I just didn't know the dollar amounts on them.
Okay.
Anything in particular?
I didn't do the calculations. I don't remember what the savings estimated for, for families was on shifting meals from homes to schools, but over 10,000 students, I imagine that starts to add up.
Yeah, she, she had indicated 100, or about $1,600 per year per family.
Okay.
Would be the savings to a family. But the total amount that she'd be adding to the free school meals on top of this year was about 120 million statewide.
And that's funded?
That's funded.
That's funded, okay.
Correct. So there'd be no, no cost to, to, to parents, children, and...
Taxpayers.
And, and, or anybody, the district.
There's gonna be a cost to taxpayers.
We'd see our, well, I'm sure there'll be a way, but, uh, we would just use our school meal reimbursement program the same way we have always, but it should all be funded.
Okay.
Anything else?
Mr. Butler?
Thank you for the presentation. One thing I've always heard about advocacy is that the legislators generally recommend against coming in with a dozen or 15 or 20 priorities. They always want to say, yeah, I gotta be able to hold it in my hand, the number of things that you, that, that you want to advocate for. I wonder if you, there's, you know, a dozen here. We talked before about the students with disabilities related advocacy needs. I wonder if you could, if you had to pick just a couple of these things that you could have be successful, what they would be?
Go ahead, if you...
So, so one of the, so I'm actually on ASPO's Government Relations Committee, and we actually have a meeting this week, but one of the things that is high on the priority list is the, the transportation-related, the electric vehicle. The revisions to the formula were a very high priority, and the recommendations that came out from the Rockefeller study were, were largely informed by the hearings that were held, and ASPO did participate in all of those. So those corrections to the formula and implementation of additional changes that would make the formula more equitable are a part of it. One thing that didn't come out of the Rockefeller study that ASPO advocated for was to level up the funding rather than to redistribute the existing pool in different ways. So really looking to look at the true cost of educating students in New York and what that takes to do it right everywhere.
Mm-hmm. As opposed to just a head-count-based formula?
And changing, changing the distribution, you know, where there are winners and losers.
I would, I also add to the foundation aid piece, maybe the growth aid formula. There's a lot of districts, including us, where we've seen increases in ELL and other folks in the year, and we don't have any, we don't receive any additional funding in the current year. We get the funding the following year, we've already incurred the costs, so that might be something where the growth, growth aid formula might be helpful for us. The other piece I think would be important would be the extension of the retirees for an additional five years, so we can continue to utilize them rather than letting it expire. It's set to expire June of '25. If that were not, if they were to expire, it would leave us with some challenges that I don't think we need. So expanding that would, would be helpful. And as Janine said, the electric bus mandate is just a struggle on everybody's mind, and it's chewing up resources and time of people within the district.
And, and one final one is the repayment of past due aid that had been initially either incorrectly or not submitted timely. So that pool of funds has not been, there has not been a pool of fund allocated to repay that queue of unpaid aid. Ours is about $718,000. So a recommendation is to fully fund that past due queue and then to allocate resources every year to continue that as a current appropriation.
Okay. Great.
Mr. Maloney?
First of all, on the universal school meals that she's proposing, we're already doing it, right? We already have, because of income base...
Because of our, we're all CEP, we're all CEP schools. So there are some districts that their buildings are not CEP where that doesn't apply. With her change, even if you're not CEP, there would be free, free meals across the entire state. CEP is the community eligible.
Right, right. But does it cost us any money right now? Do we get reimbursed fully? Right? Also, on the, on the electric bus initiative, I know we've been dragging our feet on that for certain reasons, but the new president, it says drill, baby, drill. So is that going to affect New York State in your estimation over a period of time?
I don't know. There, I, I can see it go both ways. I can see it where loss of that funding could impact us, but I, I also believe, this is just my own personal, there's just, this initiative is, is something they, the governor, the governor wishes to do, and whether she'll put additional funding behind. The money that won't be, that may not be coming from the feds is yet to be seen. Personally, I'd like to see that the, the mandate ease up a little bit in terms of...
Zero emissions.
Timelines, be extended out a little bit further and maybe change a lot to near zero as opposed to zero emission. So it allows for some propane and some of the gas buses and some of the new diesel buses are, are near zero, but they're not even a consideration. Right now, the only thing you can do is electric bus starting in January of 2027. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do, Sean, but it's more for, I guess, superintendent.
Thank you.
I think it's more for the superintendent, but thank you very much for your, for your presentation. A couple of things. She talks about the governor apprenticeships. I think that could be phenomenal for our kids, but so many of them are based on students academically prepared, especially in math. When I was at Edison, we were not getting the ninth graders who were doing well in these amazing shops where they could graduate and get very high-paying jobs. So I think it's more critical that we make sure that, that reading and math scores, you know, we really focus on those to prepare our kids. And when they talk about media literacy, first they need to know how to read and write before they start getting knowledge from computers.
Any other questions? Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, 6.01. Can I, so I move to the table, quarterly reporting of professional service contracts greater than $50,000. Moved by Mr. Stetzel. Seconded by Vice President Farmer. Any comments, questions, concerns on that? Seeing none of those in favor, that passes nine to zero. Moving on, 6.02, tax tertiary settlement refund. Can I, so I move that to the table, please? Moved by Ms. Moore, seconded by Mr. Butler. Any comments, questions, concerns on that? Seeing none of those in favor, that passes nine to zero. Moving on, extra classroom activity funds quarterly report. Can I, so I move that to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Bonagario, seconded by Vice President Farmer. Any comments, questions, concerns on that? Seeing none?
I do, sorry.
Vice President Farmer?
Yes, thank you. I just want to make sure that we recognize that the different amounts of money that are being saved or raised in various different schools and what that could mean for our students having the ability to participate in various activities. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, or concerns on that? All right, seeing none of those in favor, that passes nine to zero. Moving on to 6.04, authorization for emergency placement of the warehouse floor to transportation support services center, service facility. Can I, so I move that to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Stetzel, seconded by Mr. Butler. Any comments, questions, concerns on this? Mr. Butler?
I feel like I remember at one point, there was some discussion about who was at fault for this, for this defect and that there might be a lawsuit. Is that still pursuing and we're, we're, this, authorizing this payment doesn't restrict our ability to recoup those lawsuits?
We have filed the necessary papers for the lawsuit.
Okay.
The warehouse floor repair plans have been sent to SED. They're looking for the emergency resolution in order to pay it back to us quicker.
Okay.
So it's merely a formally, but the lawsuit has been filed.
Okay, and so if we, we'll, we'll make the repair and get reimbursed for it if we're successful in the lawsuit?
At some point, yeah, it will, yeah, it will take some time, but yeah, we'll do this, and then we'll come back to the board for an appropriation of funds to start the work, and then we'll start the repairs shortly.
Thank you.
Mr. Maloney?
The appropriation for funding for this floor, though, it's got to come out of a reserve fund, right, the initial?
Correct. We'll appropriate fund balance for it.
Thank you.
Up to the 912,000 that's listed here.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor? That passes nine to zero. Moving on to updated yearly appointments. Can I, so I move that to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Stetzel, seconded by Vice President Farmer. Any comments, questions, concerns on those? Seeing none of those in favor, passes nine to zero. Moving on to 6.06. Can I, so I move the resolution for the architect design services. Moved by Ms. Moore, seconded by Vice President Farmer. Any comments, questions, concerns on this? Mr. Maloney?
Is this, is this the one where SWBR sent in a quote for? There was only two?
Correct. There were two. There were two proposals submitted, were recommended.
And the other one was?
PDG, openly designed group.
They're new, though, right, to us?
They've been around.
They've been around?
Yeah.
And the reason why we chose SWBR is even, even though they were more money, is our director, our architect came from SWBR, didn't he?
Correct, but that wasn't the reason why we wanted SWBR. There were a number of reasons that we hashed out at the committee meetings, mostly notable around SWBR. They've got the skill and the capacity and the bench to do it. They're very experienced in multi-year, multi-phased projects. They've done our 20, 2021 B.C. building condition survey. They participated in all the walkthroughs through the buildings for which level up is reflective of those conversations. So we decided, made, as a consensus committee, to have the recommendation go with SWBR versus PBD.
I know you said that there was 11 or 12 people that you, different agencies, which you'd sent...
Seven.
Information, seven informations out, and then, and SWBR was the only one...
Originally, just to clarify, originally, the proposal went out to seven larger local firms. Of those seven, six said they would not participate in submitting a bid. That just left one bid for the architect work. We then revised the scope of work and the phasing of the project and put it back out for bid, and of the six that initially said they would not submit a bid, five said, we're still not submitting a bid. But SWBR, who initially said, yeah, no, decided to say yes, which left us with two bids, although we tried to solicit bids from seven of the largest architect firms in the area.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Bonagario?
Thank you. Following up on Mr. Maloney's questions, I just want to say first off that I appreciated the opportunity to participate in that process. Terry and I both participated in that. I'll speak for myself, but I, I found it to be a very impressive process. I thought the, the, the entire procedure of vetting a, 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 a large number of experienced staff in the room participated, interviewing teams of, of candidates, and I thought, first, my, it was my first experience in that, and I was just very impressed. I thought it was a very thorough process. And I think we're, we, you all are to be, to be commended. I understand Mr. Maloney's concerns, and, and I want to say also there that those concerns were also brought up among the committee members and, you know, kicked around. And I, again, I think that speaks to a recognition of the circumstances at play in our community, in the, in the broader economic environment. And I understand that there is a desire to find ways to, to broaden participation in future work. So I, I understand the, the concerns of that, but I, again, speaking for myself and as someone who clearly lacks the technical skills to be able to evaluate, it was great just to see a lot of really competent people very conscientiously approaching that process. So I, I just want to say thank you, and it was a privilege to be part of it.
Thank you for the comment.
Ms. Like?
Is it a legal requirement that we have an outside architect even though we have an in-house architect?
No. No, but we, internally, we could not do the work.
Project.
With, this is a whole team of architects that would have to design all five or six phases of the $72 million project.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? That, all those in favor? That passes nine to zero. Moving on to 7.01, quarterly reporting of professional service contracts exceeding 20 but less than $50,000. It's written information only. Does anybody have any questions? Moving on to anticipated bids, it's written information only. Does anybody have any questions? And budget and revenue status reports, written information only. Does anybody have any questions on that? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Can I, so I move the consent agenda to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Stetzel, seconded by Mr. Maloney. Any comments, questions, concerns on the consent agenda? I would just like to thank the extra classroom activity funds at various buildings. They did a host of things for our buildings throughout the district. I'd like to thank Richard and Linda Grossman for their donation in memory of Roy Baumann, Class of 72 at Arcadia, Shannon Hicken, and Brenda DeBona, their donations in memory of Gillian Brianci Forte, the Greece Teachers Association for their donation to the new teacher induction, Jason Minzer for his donation, Joe Prestigiacomo for his donation, Oster and Keller Williams... and Keller Williams Realtors for their donation, District Office HR for their donations for gift cards, and Sarah Howard for a donation of a trumpet, and Mission Share for their holiday gifts and foods that they donated for 16 families. It's much appreciated by the school district. With that, all those in favor? That passes nine to zero. Moving on to 9.01, student trip approval. Can I have somebody move this to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Stetzel, seconded by Vice President Farmer. Any comments, questions, concerns on this?
I have a couple of questions. The cost of this trip, how is it funded? I know most of our student trips are... There's some fundraising components, et cetera, that I see in them, and this one, I don't see that.
Sean, over here.
Oh, sorry, Mike.
It's funded out of Title, Title IV.
Okay. And I guess my question in the timing, we don't have school on a Friday. Why don't we go like Wednesday, Thursday, Friday as opposed to Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
I'm not sure. I can get back to those who had finer trip plans and...
I mean, it would just seem to have students miss less instruction days as opposed to three instruction days out of it. That, any other comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none of those in favor? That passes nine to zero. Moving on to 11.01, I'd like to lift from the table the coalition to oppose the regionalization of New York Public Schools Article 78 proceedings. Can I have somebody move that, please? Moved by Mr. Stetzel. So, seconded by Mr. Maloney. All those in favor of lifting from the table?
Can you explain the procedure there, what we're doing when we do that?
Sure. Basically, the motion was tabled.
Right.
So to bring it back, you have to lift it off the table.
Okay.
So to even discuss it, we have to lift it off the table before we can discuss it.
Okay.
So this is basically a procedural process to lift it from the table to bring it back to a discussion point.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? All those in favor? Those opposed?
So we won't revisit or oppose?
Correct. We're not lifting it from the table, correct. All right.
Wait a minute.
I thought you had that the other way around.
If you're... If she's opposing it, she's against lifting it from the table.
No. To vote? Yes.
Is lifting it from the table so we can talk about it.
So we can talk about it.
Yeah, and she said if she voted no, we don't talk about it.
Gotcha.
Okay. Are we clear now?
Yes.
We're going to vote again. All right. All those in favor of lifting from the table to discuss, to put back on the table, the regionalization? Those opposed? That passes seven to two. Now, moving on to coalition to oppose the regionalization of New York Public Schools Article 78 proceedings. It's back on the table for discussion. You received an email we got from the attorney today. She talks about the whole thing. Basically, just so everybody's aware, the Article 78 proceeding has passed. It was filed two days after our last meeting, so we missed a window to join the Article 78 proceeding, but our attorney highlighted some other things that we may be interested in doing or could do, so it's back on the table. So can I get a motion to discuss the regionalization of public schools? Motion by Mark, seconded by Mary. All those in favor? That passes eight to one. All right, so we're back on topic. Who'd like to start? I think, Mark, this was your cup of tea, so I'll give you the opportunity.
Sure. So I thank you for contacting our attorney and gathering some information. The information was really received this evening, so kind of late, although I think it was helpful information. Maybe my suggestion is going to be contrary to what we all just voted on, but I think it would make sense for us to digest that information in light of our options, which are probably broader than what was in the initial recommendation.
Correct.
So I would like to revisit that and likely propose an alternative, possibly withdraw the recommendation, but I think it makes sense to consider options and a best way forward with it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Like.
I think it's clear that even Regent Hale was misinformed about what they voted for when they thought they were voting for an amendment, because indeed, the language has not been changed. That is a real problem for me, that the state is very aware of the opposition, but they won't change the language. And I want, you know, there has to be some reason that they're not, and I think it's because it can be used in a way that none of us have any idea, the same as the medical internment camps are right now in court being fought over because of an agency regulation.
Can I say something first, if you're good? Just as a point of clarification, four of us from the board last week... Matt, last week, right? Am I got my dates right? Last week, we met with SED, the Commissioner, Regent Hale, their counsel, and I'm going to agree with you, Ms. Like, they told us they were going to forward us all the information about the change in regulations and the change in language, and we've yet to receive that. So I am concerned that there is, you know, more to the story at that point that they haven't, because they told us, "Oh, yeah, we're going to send it to you. We're sending it to you." And it's been a week, and I keep expecting an email to send to all of you guys with those things they told the four of us that they were going to send. And just so everybody knows, it was Board Member Farah, Vice President Farmer, myself, and Mr. Bonagario. We attended a meeting along with Superintendent's Cabinet. So there are some things that came out of that meeting that we were supposed to get that we've yet to get, so I'm going to follow up with Regent Hale on that. Does anybody else want to talk about this? I have an idea that I'd like to throw to the board unless we want to keep kicking this around for a bit.
Well, I... I guess I would like to make an additional comment.
Sure.
And agreeing with Mary's comments regarding the regionalization, what I would like to emphasize is that the language in the regulation is very specific, and what the Commissioner and her team assured us was, oh, despite that, the language in the FAQs and what we're saying are what really is driving this. But that does leave a big concern about what the actual language says. And the same, I shared with all of my board colleagues, another district, a rural district southwest or southeast of Buffalo, a much smaller district, poor district, and in fact, had essentially the same conversation, not directly with the Commissioner. I think we get... Have a little more access in that regard for some reason, but they received the same assurances and came to the conclusion, "Thank you very much. We choose not to participate," because they were still concerned that the language of the regulation is different. So I share those same concerns, not backing away from that. I'm just wondering if there is a better approach, especially in light of our options to deal with it. Can I turn it back to you if you have some thoughts on that?
Does anybody else have any comments before I jump on this? So I would like to do, and I'll basically tell you what I'm thinking of doing to get some feedback before I do it, because once I make the motion, it won't be debatable. According to what the counsel said today, the board does not have to make a determination, any action immediately. The court is likely to issue a scheduling order that will extend the normal timelines provided for in the statute. This allows the board to more fully vet its options and have a discussion about participation once it understands what each alternative might entail. So what I would like to do is table this as a board... Well, I guess before I make the motion, is there any discussion on what I just said?
Any comment?
All right. So what I would like to do is make a motion to table taking action on the Article 78. We'll call it the Article 78 proceeding just for ease here. The Article 78 proceeding pending, I think our attorney needs to come in and explain to us what our options are as a board for getting involved in this litigation once this next steps occur. So I'd like to make a motion to table to have our attorney come in and present once the next steps in this litigation are decided. Is there a second? Sure, let's get to second. Mr. Stetzel, point of information.
Is there a timeline that must be in place for that, or can the issue be brought to the table at any point?
Yep, we can bring it back at any point. For the point of information, it can be brought back at any point, lifted from the table. I just don't want to put a timeline on it because we don't know some of the times. That's why I didn't put a time limit on it, but... Okay. There's no motion to table is non-debatable. All those in favor? Those opposed? That passes nine to zero. All right, so the motion is tabled. We'll come back to this at some point again in the future.
Mr. President?
Ms. Like.
I thank you, and I appreciate the follow-up that you've done with the attorney that's been involved with this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, can I get a motion adjourned, Mr. Maloney?
God, I almost forgot it. We were doing so well here. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Maloney made a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn, please.
All right. I can't get... Is there a second? All right, all those in favor? That passes eight to one. Thank you.